Okay, well, I think we'll get started. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our third and final session of the Regional Planning Commission's Economic Development Brown Bag series. This series has been made possible with funding provided through the U.S. Economic Development Administration. My name is Susan Badke, and I'm one of the planners here at the Regional Planning Commission. Today's brown bag focuses on financial resources for businesses, inclusive of loan programs offered through the Regional Business Fund and a grant program tied to vacant commercial space, all of which are managed by staff at the Regional Planning Commission. As we move forward with today's session, feel free to enter any comments or questions into the chat throughout the session, and we'll attempt to get to them at the end of the presentation. Please also note that today's brown bag is being recorded. And with that, thank you so much for attending, and I'll turn it over to Toby Lemahue, the RBF Fund Manager. Toby, the floor is yours.
All right. Thanks, Susan, and thanks for everybody for coming. Like Susan said, please feel free to use the chat to put some questions in. I think I am going to just answer questions at the end of the presentation, and then we'll kind of go from there. So I think we'll have enough time to do that. So you are all seeing a slide about financial resources for businesses. I am going to talk about, like Susan said, those are those resources that are available through the nonprofit Regional Business Fund, and also just touch upon one grant program at the very end. So just to kind of start, I'll give a little bit of background on the Regional Business Fund. The Regional Business Fund is a nonprofit 501(c)(6), initially created by the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. It's to administer business revolving loan funds in the same seven-county region that the Regional Planning Commission's footprint is. So all of the programs I talk about are used within the counties of Barron, Chippewa, Clark, Eau Claire, Dunn, Polk, and St. Croix counties. The purpose of the Regional Business Fund is to offer those low-interest loan funds to businesses that provide an economic benefit to the region. We look at it through a different lens than a bank or a credit union. We're looking at those businesses that might be expanding within the region, increasing their tax base. They might be diversifying the economy. Maybe they're adding a childcare center in, or a restaurant, or a grocery store that's not available in a certain part of the region. Maybe they're adding new technology, and they're upskilling those workers on those new pieces of equipment. Maybe they're revitalizing buildings in the region's downtowns, creating or retaining quality jobs, or leveraging private capital investment in the region. The Regional Business Fund, as a nonprofit, is administered by a Board of Directors, who is made up of nine members, inclusive of all the counties that are listed there, and they meet monthly. And as Susan alluded to, the staffing is provided by the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. We have seven total programs that the Regional Business Fund administers, and I have them in order of chronological of time of when we got those funds. So the first program was capitalized in 1995. The second one was added in 2006. And our largest and most-used fund is called our Consolidated Fund. That was added in 2007. And that's inclusive of four programs. And then our last program was created last year in response to COVID-19. Before really diving into each and all of these seven programs, I would like to note that none of our programs discussed today are intended to compete with the financial institutions that are already out there, the banks and credit unions that exist. Businesses are required first to check with a bank or a credit union before applying for Regional Business Fund financing. Another caveat, the Consolidated Loan Fund Program, that program that's listed in the center of the screen, cannot be used in the city of Eau Claire. The city of Eau Claire also has other business loan programs, and the other programs listed besides the Consolidated Fund can be used in the city. So if a business is in the city and interested in loan programs such as ours, feel free to contact me, and we can discuss if it's a good fit for our programs or for the city programs, and we'll get you worked out in either way. So now I'm going to provide more information on each of the seven programs that we have in the order that's listed on this slide. The first one, again, was established in 1995. It's called our Economic Development Administration Revolving Loan Fund Program. It's a gap financing tool, meaning that there is bank or credit union financing that is required of this program. A minimum of $2 of private investment must be obtained for every $1 of this fund into the project. So about 33% of the total project cost is what this program can fund. Loan sizes range from $10,000 at a minimum to $250,000 as a maximum. I talked about those matching funds, but those can be waived if traditional financing is not available to that business, but then the loan amounts are capped. So if there is a startup company that cannot get that traditional financing, within this program, we could provide a loan up to $30,000 for those startups. And then for existing established companies that are unable to get that financing, we could provide up to $60,000 for a business that is two years of age or older. This program has a 4% interest rate, and eligible uses of the loan funds include working capital or fixed asset financing. This program, again, can be used in the city of Eau Claire. Just wanted to note that. The next program is called the Technology Enterprise Fund. This was capitalized in 2006. There is about $330,000 available within this program. It's meant to assist those companies that are new and emerging technology companies. The loan amounts range from $100 to $250,000. There is a one-to-one dollar-for-dollar match of private capital that is required of this program. And the program can have a deferred loan repayment term of up to two years. So this is meant for that company that has an idea. Maybe they have to do some research and development, some prototyping, some patenting. They need the dollars now to do all of those things. So we could give them those dollars, and then we can defer those payments for up to two years while they do all of those things, and then they start commercialization of that product, and they realize sales. So that's kind of the purpose of this program. The interest rate is a little bit higher compared to all of our other programs. It's 16%, depending on the risk of the company. Again, this one can be used in the city of Eau Claire. The Consolidated Fund is the next program that I'm going to talk about, and this one is inclusive of four programs. And this one is the most utilized within our region. We have about $16 million in total within this program, within those four programs, subprograms, and we currently have about $1.9 million cash available for lending. The Consolidated Fund was established in 2007, when there was a successful consolidation of 31 individual community and county revolving loan funds in the seven-county region. The individual pots of money were consolidated into the nonprofit Regional Business Fund, which removed the federal requirements of the local revolving loan funds. This made them much easier to use. When the funds were transferred to the RBF, there was an agreement that local decisioning would still occur for the loan request, and there are still county and community loan committees sprinkled throughout our region that still do the decisioning on those requests. Sidebar, thank you to all the volunteers that do make up those committees. There are many of you out there, including the county EDC directors also that assist with marketing the program. So thank you to everybody that helps out with that. So within the Consolidated Fund, I'm going to talk more in detail about the four main programs. The first one is the Revolving Loan Fund Program. This program is our most popular program, and it's meant to provide that gap financing for business that can't get all of their traditional financing through a bank or a credit union. Funds can be used for acquisition of equipment, machinery, furniture, fixtures, new working capital, site improvements, land and building acquisition, really any sort of business financing that is needed, we can assist with. Except for two caveats, we do not refinance existing debt, nor do we offer revolving lines of credit. The minimum loan size within this program is $25,000 with those matching funds required, meaning that a bank or a credit union and a borrower contribution is also required. We can provide up to 25% of the total project cost as our hard maximum. Loan amount depends on the gap and the economic development benefit also, and those are listed there that I previously talked about. We do require collateral within this program. It's oftentimes subordinate to the lead lender. We oftentimes just mirror their position and take a subordinate interest. Our interest rate is fixed at 4%. The Board of Directors set that annually, and so far, that's been at that 4% rate for a number of years. There are five-to-10-year terms within this program, and it's dependent upon what the funds are being used for. If we're helping with working capital within this program, we're going to be a short, it's going to have a shorter term of five years. If it's real estate, we can do up to 10 years. And we do have a flexible repayment term, meaning we can offer interest deferral periods or interest-only periods. This is a quick example of a revolving loan fund financing structure. This was for an equipment purchase for a business. They were actually going to be retaining some jobs and also creating jobs, so there was economic benefit associated with the project. The bank was able to do $237,000 of the total $316,000 request. The borrowers were bringing about $32,000 to the deal. So there was still that gap in the financing package that they had. That was the request to us for the 47/4. It ended up being approved by the committee, had a 4% rate. We did a 10-year term with the same amortization because of the useful life of that equipment. Again, the use of funds was to purchase that router and crane. And then we took a second lien position on the CNC router and the crane that we financed. A few more examples within the revolving loan fund program. This one is in Chippewa Falls. We assisted CrossFit Chippewa Falls. They were previously leasing space in downtown Chippewa Falls, but with our assistance, they were able to purchase and renovate a new space in which to house their CrossFit business. So our funds assisted with the purchase and the renovation of that building. Going over to Clark County, Abbotsford, 18 machines specializes in providing quality, custom fabricated and machine parts to customers in both the United States and Canada. They were not able to keep up with the demand for their service, so they decided to purchase another boring machine to expedite their turnaround times. The bank was able to assist with $300,000 for that purchase of that boring equipment, and then our program assisted with the remaining $100,000. A few more examples here sprinkled on this slide. Cage Innovation is in Osceola, Wisconsin. They were previously a Minnesota company that moved over the border into Polk County. They built that new building, which increased the tax base in the city, and they moved those existing jobs over the border also into Polk County. There was also a lot of financing that was involved in this one. There was financing from a local bank, the Village's Tax and incremental financing district, the SBA 504 Loan Program, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation tax credits, and then our loan provided to assist with the cost of construction. They were expecting to also, in addition to retaining those jobs, also create more jobs at that location. Trendstone, featured in the bottom right, was outgrowing its previous location and needed a larger space. They chose an underutilized vacant lot, too many, was also an eyesore in the town of Washington, just outside the city of Eau Claire. They had made some major renovations to the building, and along with a local bank, the RBF provided gap funding to Trendstone in the form of two loans, one to assist with the purchase of the real estate and a second to assist with the purchase of equipment. Mimi's Cookies and Creamery is located in downtown River Falls, and she was a startup company a couple of years ago, and our program assisted with those startup costs. Tiny Tree Academy in Chippewa Falls. They had purchased a recently vacant, actually, building that used to house a daycare, a daycare, but it had closed down. They purchased it, did some renovations, had to purchase some furniture and other equipment, and our funds helped with the purchase of the equipment and the furniture. So that was the revolving loan fund program within the Consolidated Fund. Another program within that Consolidated Fund is the Micro Loan Fund Program. This program is meant to assist startup companies or newly established companies that are two years of age or younger, who are unable to obtain traditional financing. It can be used within conjunction with traditional financing if they do have some, but just not all of their funds. But we can be the sole source of financing within this program. Our loan amounts range from $5,000 to $30,000. And we have eligible uses across the board, again, 4% interest rate, three-to-10-year term. So for working capital within this program, we're going to have a shorter term with three years. And we do require business plan with financial projections within this program. Couple of examples of startup companies that we've assisted. One in Barron, Wisconsin, and that was the Blueberry Line Coffee House. We participated with a $30,000 microloan that helped with the purchase of that real estate and some equipment. And then some other startups that are shown on the slide. Thread Lab LLC was a startup retail sewing and quilt shop, which also offers related classroom instruction. One of the owners has over 30 years of experience in the sewing and quilting field and recognized the need for a store like theirs, a nominee. Our fund helped with the business startup and inventory costs. Auburn Rod and Custom in the center of the slide moved into the old fire station building in New Auburn a few years ago, and they started their own custom auto body shop. Our funds helped with $30,000 to help with the purchase of that building. Poppy Popcorn Company is located in downtown Rice Lake, and they offer a variety of gourmet popcorn and other sorts of gift items. They needed a microloan to assist with the interior renovations and equipment purchases. And also, just to fast forward, we also assisted them with a facade loan, which I'll talk about in a bit, for the exterior improvements to that building. M&amp;M Catering is located in Nielsville, and it was purchased by new owners. So as a change in ownership, we deemed them as a startup business, and we helped them with that loan to purchase the existing business. J&amp;J Hillside Hollow is a small, community-based residential facility located in rural Glenwood City. This business provides rural community living and personal care services to persons with developmental and physical disabilities, and the RBF microloan assisted with the installation of a sprinkler system. The Growth Loan Fund is the third program within the Consolidated Fund and is meant to assist those businesses that are established over the age of two years. They also have the prerequisite that they have at least $100,000 in sales within the last 12 months to be eligible for this program. And the main caveat, again, is that they are unable to get traditional financing. Again, we can be the sole source of financing within this program, though, and the loan amounts range from $10,000 to $60,000 with no matching funds required. Eligible uses, again, across the board with this one, 4% interest rate and five-to-10-year terms. Some examples within this program. Timmy Logging is located in Clark County and was formed by two brothers in 2015. Timmy Logging also utilized a microloan with us when they first started up, but then they needed some new equipment after they were too old for the microloan fund program, but still couldn't get the money from a bank or a credit union. So we assisted with them purchasing a new piece of equipment. Fisher Brothers started over 10 years ago by two brothers and provide waterslide restoration services out of Chippewa Falls. They recently purchased a vacant building in Chippewa Falls to expand their operations, and RBF lent them $60,000 to help fund construction, site improvements, and equipment. Rush River Brewing is located in River Falls, and they needed a loan to assist with brewery interior renovations. Specifically, most recently, they needed to add some accessible bathrooms, and it grew their capacity of the tap room from 49 people to 144. The Facade Loan Fund Program is meant to assist tenants or property owners revitalize downtown commercial buildings in the region's downtowns. This program is meant to be an incentive, so as such, it has a 1% interest rate, and it's meant for those companies or businesses that are going to renovate the exterior components, such as exterior doors, windows, and audience, lighting, signage, graphics, anything like that. The applicant does have to provide a design for what they intend on doing with that building, and the loan amounts for this program are from $5,000 to $30,000. Again, the 1% interest rate, and we can have a term up to seven years with an amortization even longer of up to 15, making those payments a little bit lower. There is always a mortgage on the building being renovated with this program. And then just some kind of some nice before-and-after photos, again, meant to assist those businesses with those sorts of renovations at a low cost for them. This was in New Richmond. There was two buildings side by side that both were able to participate within the program. And you can see the before and after, and how nice that is. Another in Balsam Lake. Their total project cost was a little over $46,000. The facade loan fund program assisted again with that $30,000. This one occurred in Baldwin. Total project cost of $32,000. The Regional Business Fund facade loan fund program provided $30,000 of that. Those funds were used for brickwork, cornices, trim, signage, and lighting. Another one in St. Croix Falls. This is for family therapy associates. They provide counseling and therapy services. They have a few different locations. This one happened to be in St. Croix Falls, and we assisted with two loans to them, a revolving loan fund loan and a facade loan fund. So you can see the before and after of that for the facade. And I should note that the facade loan fund program can be really added on and used in conjunction with any of the other programs that we have to incentivize those exterior renovations to occur. So those were all the Consolidated Loan Fund programs. The last program that we have, that was just capitalized last year in 2020 in relation to COVID-19, is called the EDA Cares Act Recovery Assistance Revolving Loan Fund. This program could and was used in the city of Eau Claire. I say could and was because all $500,000 allocated to this program have been utilized by 50 businesses with $10,000 loans to each for COVID-19 relief financing. Just FYI that eventually, when these loans get repaid, we will have this pot of dollars available to businesses. Just a couple of quick notes about our application and approval process. All of our applications can be found on our website at www.rbfinc.org, or you can email us. And then with all of our Consolidated Loan Fund Program applications, we assess staff review for eligibility, make sure we've got everything that we need, and then we take it to the appropriate committee for their decisioning. With all of our seven programs, staff have no lending authority, meaning we cannot make any decisions in terms of a yes, you get the money, or no, you don't. We just determine eligibility, and then we take it through the appropriate channel for decisioning. The EDA Cares and Technology Enterprise Fund programs are all reviewed by the Regional Business Fund Board of Directors. Staff here handle all loan closings and dispersments and loan repayments. So we act kind of like a little mini-bank here in terms of all of that. We don't rely on any partners to help us with that. And then anything that's related to something that's post-closing, so I guess coordination, a payment deferral, or a workout, anything like that, they come to staff first, and then it goes to the Board of Directors for their decisioning. This is just a snapshot for the Consolidated Fund Program, again, our most utilized program since 2007, when that fund was established, to the end of August. Just the number or the amount of dollars that have been lent out within the region based on county. And then this is just that same time period, same program, with just the number of businesses that have been assisted. These are the three folks that, well, there's only two listed. So there's two people that are right now on staff with the Regional Planning Commission, that staff the Regional Business Fund, myself and my. There is a vacancy. If anybody is interested in applying, you can reach out to me directly or look at our website for more information. So I think I'm going to now just switch gears. I'll go through this information, and then I'll have Susan look to the chat again if there are any questions about the Regional Business Fund programs. I'm going to zoom in through this stuff because I don't have that feedback from anybody, but then we can have that kind of conversations about any questions that you have. So a grant program that the Regional Planning Commission is currently administering, started at the state level from the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. This is a statewide program, and we're the regional entity in our region to administer this program. So we have that same seven-county region where we are administering this program. And it is meant to assist businesses that are moving into previously vacant commercial spaces with $10,000 grants. The timing does matter with those moves, and that business has to locate within that new space, sign a lease, show us a deed within a time period of January 1st of this year through June 30th of next year. But I will say through June 30th of next year or until funds are exhausted. Within our region, our seven counties, we have about $3 million in total allocation to give out in those $10,000 chunks to businesses that meet these criteria. And to date, we've already received almost 200 applications. So funds are going quickly. I should note that a business does not qualify for the grant funds if they are simply renewing an existing lease or vacating one space to simply take advantage of the grant by going into another. The applications for this program can be found online at the Regional Planning Commission's website or the Regional Business Fund's website as well, under the COVID-19 Resources tab. So I think that was my last slide. I might stop sharing my screen, and then I might, maybe I won't. I don't know. And then I'll go back to the beginning, and then if there are any questions about anything in particular, I can go back to that specific slide.
Thanks so much, Toby. You provided a lot of great information on all of your programs. I'm not seeing any questions or comments in the chat, but attendees, is there another reminder? This will be the last one. Feel free to enter any questions or comments in the chat box, and we'll certainly address them. It looks like Paul, thank you, from Amory Economic Development Corporation. How many applications for the bounce-back program so far?
Yeah, so we have about 200 applications to date. So right now, we have that many, so that would be $2 million if all of those are vetted and eligible. Still working through that process, so I'm not sure that all of them are going to be eligible and provide all of the necessary information, but about 200 as of today.
Yeah, and I think we've, correct me if I'm wrong, Toby, but I believe that we have approved and dispersed funds to 140 applicants. So $1.4 million has been already distributed throughout the region. So that's huge. Any other questions or comments? Okay, another one. How much do you have available in bounce-back funding?
Yeah, so we have about a $3 million allocation in our seven-county region. Just going to go to that slide about the bounce-back, just because that seems where we're talking. So that's that seven-county region right there. So $3 million. Like we talked about, about 200 applications right now. So if all of those are funded, about $1 million left. So good question. So keep spreading the word about that. Encourage your businesses that if they are eligible, ready to apply soon to get their names in the queue to be considered for that program. And I forgot to note, and Susan didn't pipe up, that she's assisting with this program. I alluded to the fact that we had a little bit of turnover recently. So Susan Badke, that has been nice enough to moderate this, is helping with that program. So if they have any questions, you can contact both her and I.
Great. A few other questions that are rolling in. Will there be a site where we can find out what businesses were successful in getting the Main Street Bounce Back Grant? I'm not certain of anything, Toby, in terms of, you know, detailed inventory of grant recipients. Are you aware of anything?
I think what we could share, Paul, is the county breakdown of those. We do have that, as Susan alluded to, for the businesses that have already been committed and sent those dollars. So we could share that with you after this session to show you kind of the breakdown by county of where those businesses were allocated. I am not sure if WEDC at a state level is going to have any sort of map or anything about a location of where those are, but we could certainly share that information for our region.
Yeah, great. Yep, we can assist with that, Paul. Another question came in. Can I get a $30,000 microloan if I am in the city of Eau Claire?
So great question, Luke, and thanks for posing it, because I think I glossed over that. So unfortunately, none of the Consolidated Loan Fund programs, revolving loan fund, microloan fund, growth loan fund, or facade can be used in the city of Eau Claire, although we do have a few products, specifically the EDA revolving loan fund program that could potentially assist businesses in the city of Eau Claire. And if you recall, I talked about how we could be the sole source of financing for a startup. So similar to the microloan fund program within the EDA revolving loan fund program, if that business cannot get traditional financing. So that change happened within the year here. So if there are any businesses that can't get traditional financing or striking out also at the city of Eau Claire with their loan programs, then have them call me and have them talk to me about the EDA revolving loan fund program, and we could potentially assist them.
Great, thanks, Toby. Any other comments or questions related to any of the programs that Toby has talked about today? Toby, is it best for a new business, if they're looking to undertake a startup, to work with their lender first and then come to you?
Yeah, that's right. That's typically what we would suggest, is that they look to try to find that traditional financing, be it from a bank or a credit union, first before they come to us. We're also going to be talking with that lender just to make sure that, you know, we're not stepping on their toes, nor are we extending too much when they can maybe fill that gap. We want them to do as much as they can first and then come to us to do the remaining piece.
Sure. Great. Well, thanks so much for all of the information, Toby. Looks like we're ending here a bit early, but if there are no other questions, I think we'll end this session. And thank you again to all of those who attended. We appreciate it and look forward to joining. We appreciate it and look forward to joining again in the future when we have additional brown bag sessions. So thanks so much.